Wilmer City Council meeting for Monday, July 15th to order roll call.
Mayor Calvin. Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Mesky.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus. Here. Plowman.
Here.
Nelson. Here. Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed deletions or additions to the agenda? Seen in hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the agenda as presented discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, we have the city, Wilmer City Council open forum. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak?
How about consent?
I'm sorry. Motion to approve the consent item.
So moved.
We haven't done.
Second.
Let's start this meeting over, should we? Ms. Thompson, would you like to go through the consent items?
Sean, tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of July 1st, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of July 8th, planning commission minutes of July 1st, application for exempt permit from United Way of West Central Minnesota, application to conduct excluded bingo, Pennock Lions Club, the accounts payable report June 27th through July 10th, council's acceptance, the park and recreation board minutes of June 19th, the monthly building report for June, and for council's information, an appointment of Kalaf Besser to Board of Zoning Appeals. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the agenda, to approve the consent agenda items. Discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, the city council open forum. Is there anybody that wishes to speak? Thank you. Next, we'll open the first hearing, which is an ordinance authorizing issuance of general obligation bond, series 2019A. Finance Director Steve Olkens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We're here tonight for a public hearing on the issuance of 2019 street financing. And with us tonight, we have Ms. Kathy Aho from Baker Tilly, formerly Springstead's Incorporated. And she has a short PowerPoint presentation to go through for you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I know that you have heard a lot about these projects in the past, and I'm going to speak just to the ordinance and provide a little bit of context for those that might be listening. There are two actions that will be requested this evening. The one that is the subject of the hearing is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the street improvements. And the second is a resolution that's actually authorizing the sale of those bonds. So the public hearing would be to authorize the issuance of $4,740,000. This financing is going to be paid back in part by special assessments, and the balance will be made up. The council will set levies at the time that the bonds are sold, and they can be defrayed by other funds that are available to the city on an annual basis. The purpose of the financing are a number of our reconstruction and overlay projects. There was a public hearing that was conducted in March of 2018 that, to which all of the affected property owners were invited, and the projects were covered in detail, so I'm not going to do that this evening. The sources of funds come from a number of different places. The bond issue itself, $4,740,000, municipal state aid, federal aid, municipal utility commission, and money from the wastewater treatment plant, for a total of just over six and a quarter million dollars. Most of that goes directly to project costs, and then there are professional services and some administrative costs funded as well. The estimated debt service would look like this. Again, this is just an estimate. The principal maturing, you can see there, that results in a total principal and interest that is approximately level each year. The anticipated assessments without prepayments or delinquencies would look like the second column from the right. And then because state law requires 105% debt service levy, that less the assessment income would be the levy required that you see over on the far right-hand side. The general timeline, this evening, the council is conducting a required public hearing on the ordinance. And if those charter provisions are met, the filing period would end August 4th. And sometime in early August, then the pricing committee could lock in the rate on the borrowing, and the funds would be received in the August-September timeframe. Again, the actions that are requested, the approval of the ordinance this evening, that again starts the clock for the petition period. And then there'll be a second resolution, that's before you authorizing the bonds themselves. That action would be contingent on the charter provisions being met, so that would happen in early August. And also establishes a maximum amount of bonds and a maximum interest rate, but does not specify the method of sale. And I would stand for any questions if you have them, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to ask questions of Ms. Aho or our finance director? Seen in hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council table. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Olkens or Ms. Aho? Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering, where do you see the interest rates trending? Are you thinking they're going to be coming down and be favorable for us, or what's your thoughts on that?
Councilmember Alvarado, I could answer that question, but one of my competitors is here, and I don't want to tip him off. Actually, the interest rates have been a pleasant surprise for issuers this year. We expected them to be increasing through the year, and the actual, actually, the opposite has been happening, so I would portray them as stable to decreasing. Anything could change that, but right now, we're in a very attractive interest rate environment.
Well, that's good to hear. Thank you.
Any other questions from any council members? Seen in hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll enter the motion to adopt, assign a number, and order final publication of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Just a little discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is a consideration for the parameters. Are there any questions of council, a bond council, or our finance director? Seen in hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll enter the motion, but I would ask our finance director to state how that motion, I thought there was an interest rate or something that, or is it just as it's stated on here?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Nelson, the interest rate in the parameters resolution is set at 3%. It will not be any larger than that. It would be lower than that, and we've had some preliminary discussions with the local lending institutions, and that would be where the pricing committee would come into making that final decision.
I'll second that. Motion made in seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Thank you for your work. Appreciate that. Next, I'll open the public hearing for a resolution to modify the legacy on first TIF plan and municipal development district. Dr. Ramstead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. This public hearing is for two modified TIF plans, GM Magnum and Legacy. They address very similar issues. First, they address the assistant state auditor's requirements, and secondly, they adjust the development district boundaries, so they allow more financial flexibility, and so the TIF plans are administratively lower maintenance. Both TIF plans have been completely amended and restated to give clarity, but also maintain the council's original intent and original financial arrangements. First, the two modified TIF plans address state auditor Jason Norris' concerns that the legacy and GM TIF plans cite old state laws, that the duration of the original TIF is not correct, and that it's supposed to include a plus-one year that includes the year prior to receipt of the first increment, that legacy and clearly suggests an extension may be necessary, that the estimates of tax increment to be generated provides two estimates and unconventionally separates administration fees out, that the estimates on the planned collection form and planned document do not match, and that there are small discrepancies in annual amounts used. And finally, that the ultimate cost estimates are left blank, and the assistant state auditor found unclear whether the cost estimates are well-aligned with the original net tax capacity of the district in relation to the TIF necessary to fund the project. Second, the two modified TIF plans address inappropriately sized development districts, which currently have the same boundaries as the TIF districts themselves. In the modified TIF plan, the TIF district size remains the same, while the development district has been enlarged to the city limits. This expansion of the development district's boundaries provides the city with the flexibility to spend a portion of the tax increments outside the geographic boundaries of each project's TIF district, if and when the council so chooses. By expanding the development district boundaries, to the corporate boundaries of the city, there may now be multiple TIF districts within the same development district, which would allow similar TIF districts to help each other. Also, in the original TIF plan, the city may have had to enlarge or often update the boundaries of the development district if financial issues arose, or as properties were combined or split at the county recorder's office. So the expansion of the development district simplifies and reduces the need to maintain geographic boundaries of the development district. We also have with us Todd Hagan from Aylers Tonight. And with that, I welcome any questions.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak to the question? Would you like to make any comments, Todd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thanks, Dave. Just wanted to say, too, that we, that Dave plugged us in early on as soon as he got the OSA request to fix the plans and the programs. We got Robert Scott involved, too, so we got this team together to get this on the right track. We're basically amending and restating what was done before. Aylers does a lot of work with tax increment reporting, so we're, you know, well aware of what the OSA's next questions would be. So it's good that the city of Wilmer takes a proactive role in moving forward with really basically rerunning the numbers and restating the plan. We went through, you know, state law recommends or doesn't recommend, it requires, that we go through the same process as if we were establishing a new tax increment district, so it was kind of a tedious process. It took a while, but we needed to meet the August 1st deadline for the OSA as well, so we're kind of behind the eight ball on this. And I want to thank the planning commission, too, for their flexibility to recommend, move forward with a special meeting to, so we could meet this date tonight. So that's, I don't know if there's any questions for me, but I'll be around as well, so I really appreciate the flexibility and plugging the team in as early as possible, so this, we can meet these deadlines, so appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Seen in hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council table. Counsel, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve the modification to the TIF plan and municipal development district.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is a resolution, I'll open a public hearing for a resolution to modify the GM Magnum TIF plan and municipal development district. Dr. Ramstead.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor and council members, I gave my full performance with the first one, but this is a very similar, this is a very similar request that we asked that you pass the motion to adopt the resolution to amend the, this is the legacy, correct?
A legacy was already done. This is GM Magnum.
Yes, to do a resolution to adopt the GM Magnum modifications. Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody from the public wishes to speak? Seen in hearing none, I'll bring it to the council, I'll close the public hearing, bring it to the council table. Counsel, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve the modification for this Magnum program.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next, we have an ordinance, and we'll open a public hearing for an ordinance authorizing the sale of real property to Hoffman Construction Company. Sean Christiansen, our Public Works Director.
Mayor, members of the council, as you heard last council meeting, this is a property sale to Hoffman Construction, who is doing the Y, Wilmer Y project. It's a portion of a piece of property that the city owns in the vicinity of the project. The only thing I would like to add, in addition to what you heard two weeks ago, was the Public Works Committee reviewed this request on June 5th. Planning Commission reviewed and recommended the land sale on June 19th, and the land sale, of course, was introduced on July 1st. The recommendation is to adopt, assign a number, and publish the ordinance, and adopt a resolution to approve the vacant land purchase agreement with Hoffman Construction, and authorize mayor and administrator to execute a version thereof in substantial conformance with the attached version.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Seen in hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve the sale of land to Hoffman Construction.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a clarification on the map that we received, there's an angle on the south side. Is this, the rest of that is right-of-way? Is that correct, Sean?
Mayor and members of the council, south side has an angle?
Am I not looking at it correctly?
You might have the map twisted.
I probably do.
There is an angle on the west side.
On the, on the side 55 is.
Yes, on the west side, and that is current MINDOT right-of-way that they need because of the elevated intersection.
So this just completes that triangle, or completes the rectangle, I should say?
This excludes that triangle.
Right, but we don't own any other land, in that the right-of-way still is?
That's correct. Absolutely, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
That way, the public has a chance to look at what, at what the council's been given. Just a little discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So how many total acres of land is it here? Is it 40 or 60?
Councilmember Fagerly, that we're selling or that we own?
That we own there.
We originally owned 60. That went to the center line of both 40 and 55, and so when you take out the additional right-of-way that MINDOT took, and the additional 200-foot right-of-way that railroad split down the middle, this is 11 and a half acres, of course, for this sale. My guess is you've probably got about 30 left.
Okay, there'll be access off of County Road 40, or?
No, there'll be, yes, there'll be limited access on the, in the northeast corner, as you can see, that right-of-way ties back into the existing, and so that'll have very little slope there, and we could probably get access at that point.
Okay, because what are we planning for the till?
Nothing. It's currently ag leased.
Yeah, and it will be once they're done with it.
Correct.
Okay. And was this part of the original plan we gave out, offers to anyone that was bidding on this project? Wasn't there three parcels, or was it just two, and it was further north?
Councilmember Fagerly, there was two. There was a 60-acre parcel and an 80-acre parcel that's further north of this map and on the west side of 55, that the highway now goes through as well, and those were parcels that were offered to one of the bidders on this project.
Okay. So they like this parcel better, then?
They like this particular parcel for the fill material that it provides.
Okay. So do they have to fill it back in, restoration after?
No, if you go to the next picture on the, in your packet, depending on how many contour lines you want to read, the proposal is to have a pond in the north, let's say, 2/3 of that, of this 11 and a half acres, leaving the south, what it says, roughly 3.8 acres available for, you're exactly right, at this point, till or farming activities, but potential sale at some time in the future.
Okay.
I should clarify, that is provided that we take that back from Hoffman at such time that the project is done, which those conversations have talked, we have talked about that.
Okay. And that holding pond is going to be just for the water of this new road, then?
That holding pond is not needed for this project, because the other two, two of the other three corners of this, of this intersection will have ponds, per the project, but the pond will be available for additional storage if need be.
Okay. Thank you.
Just some questions. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is a resolution for consideration of land purchase agreement. We're still on, I think, the one, not quite to you yet. He's got one more. He had two actions there. I'm looking for a motion. It's a resolution for consideration of land purchase agreement, the second part of Sean's comments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve a consideration of land purchase agreement as outlined by the city engineer. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next is consideration of an ordinance, of introduction of an ordinance for sale of real property to, I'll let you say the name, because I'll kill it, so.
Vianni.
Our city planner, Sarah, if you'll introduce that, please.
Yes. Mayor, members of the council, I'm here tonight to introduce another consideration of a land sale. This particular property, excuse me, is a small portion of the old wastewater treatment plant. It is on, bring up the map here, it's on the east side. The little area outlined in blue is the land that we're considering for the sale. We were approached by the interested party at the beginning of this year, in which we sent the request to the community development committee for review, and they recommended that request on February 11th, and the planning commission reviewed and recommended that sale as well in February. It is staff recommendation to, for a motion to introduce the ordinance and set a public hearing for August 5th, 2019. As you see on that map, that, that area outlined in green is the area that the interested party currently owns. It's currently used as a warehouse, and there's an easement that they currently have with the city across that blue area that they're looking to purchase. They'd like to just purchase that, that property for the sake of combining all of that area for access, for trucks there, their access to that building is on the south end. There's already a fence that exists along the west line of that blue property, that, that blue line that's drawn on the map. The fence exists there between where we have a paved driveway around the old wastewater treatment plant and the area of interest.
Counsel, what are your wishes?
Make a motion to approve the sale and set a public hearing for August 5th.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to set a public hearing for August 5th for sale of real property to a party within the city. Additional discussion. Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering, as you look at that blue area to the right of that, we've got a piece of property that says city of Wilmer? Yeah, and I can't read the numbers. 96 hyphen 923-8700. Will we have access to that? Is there, this won't limit our ability to get to that property?
No, like I stated, there's already a fence around the area that this particular interested property has around this easement area, and so we'd still have access. And if you can see south, well, east of this little park site, there's actually an access road there that you could easily extend to get access to that northern parcel there as well.
The other question I had was, what about, I don't know what the future holds for our building there. By letting that go, will we, I don't know, limit turnaround space or, or anything like that, do you think, or?
No. If anything, it, it makes this, this site that the, the property owner that's interested in buying this piece of land, it makes that site more viable for future use. I will note, pull up the next map of the plat here, just to note a couple other things. I don't foresee there being a whole lot of building happening on this area that he's looking at buying, it's more for that turnaround space, because there is a water line that runs through that area, and so we will have a permanent easement across that, that water line, to make sure that we have continued access to that, which would prohibit or limit what could actually be built on that area. And, and like I've been stating, there is a fence in that area as well, so we don't currently utilize that space either.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Could I ask you to go back to the previous map?
Yeah.
The small building that's on, to the south of the blue line.
Yes.
Is that his building?
No, that's ours.
So there could be access somehow from there across the property also?
Absolutely.
Because where you're?
Or south of that little building as well.
Where you were pointing out to be able to go north, that is actually Park and Shelter right there? I don't think there would be room to put a road to go north to that land up there.
Yeah, you'd.
You could probably on the other side of the?
Work around it somehow. Yep, absolutely.
Closer to his property, but?
Yep.
But we own that white building?
Yes, we do. I think it's storage.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Additional comments? All, all in favor of the motion to set the public hearing for sale of property for August 5th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion does carry. Thank you, Sarah. Next is Labor Relations Committee report. Councilmember Mesky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Labor Committee met on July 8th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the Labor Committee met on July eighth. Um, all of our members were there. Uh, we did talk about, um, a couple, a couple pieces for your considerations this evening. The first was our wastewater working foreman job description update. And with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I would like to, uh, defer that to our HR director who may defer it farther to our Public Works Director.
Good evening. So, first thing the committee discussed was updating the wastewater working foreman job description, which hadn't been updated since April of two thousand. So the most significant change was the removal of the master electrician license requirement. That was a piece that was only added into the position back in two thousand because the employee at the time already possessed it. So they just added it into the job description so they could utilize that. Um, so we replaced that with more wastewater specific qualifications. The electrical duties and the license have not been required for that position since that employee left the foreman role. So it isn't something that we're requiring any longer. It was more informally updated at the time that employee left. Um, so this is just formally updating it and bringing it back to where it has been historically. Um, so it would also be a highly unusual requirement to maintain for the position and make it extremely difficult to fill the role if we kept that requirement. Um, so this is just restoring it back to what it's historically been. And the committee did recommend, um, yeah, approving the update as presented.
I'd move to approve this as amended.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to amend the wastewater working foreman job description. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. Just looking at the additions and the things that were taken off, the grade level still stayed. It was still appropriate to leave the grade level as is?
Correct, yes, it would stay in a range eight. Um, because in all honesty, by adding the master electrical license requirement, uh, the position was probably underpaid for having that license. So yes, it stayed in a pay range eight.
Thank you.
Additional discussion. I just have one question, and I don't know if this is for, uh, Ms. Beckman or Councilmember Mesky. Um, it did, you did remove the portion on working with other agencies such as the Electrical Inspector. I know that, uh, in my previous experience in working for the city, um, that, that did happen on a fairly frequent basis even with maintenance staff. Uh, would there be a huge objection to leaving that one piece in? Simply because I think a number of our staff people that work at that level do interact with the State Electrical Inspector? Um, that was the only concern that I had.
I, I would love to hear the opinion of our Public Works Director on that particular issue. I personally don't have a problem with it, but-
Yeah, Mayor, Members of the Council, um, I guess I hadn't thought about that aspect of it. I suppose at any given time, um, any of the foreman superintendents would have the opportunity to, to, to interact with any of those agencies. So I don't think it affects it one way or the other to leave it in. I, I think that's, that's a fair assessment.
I'll even take that as a friendly amendment if, who seconded it?
I didn't. I would accept that as well.
Is there any opposition from the?
Is there any opposition from the council for putting that back in? So friendly amendment has been added to reinstate the, uh, interaction with the State Electrical Inspector. Uh, additional discussion. All in favor of the motion as amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? That motion does carry. Councilmember Mesky.
Uh, we also do have, um, what is becoming an ongoing occurrence, as you know, is the fifth section of the Employee Personnel Policy. Um, you'll see in your packet that it again will take our current language as well as the language from the League of Minnesota Cities and, and making that into a much more concise and direct policy. Um, the one piece that I would draw your attention to, probably the biggest change in this particular section, is adding the requirement that overtime must be approved by a supervisor in advance to be taken, um, which is how it's implemented currently. I mean, it is going to make that an official part of our policy manual. So with that, I would move the approval of, uh, section five of the, uh, Employee Personnel Policy.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve section five of the City of Wilmor Employee Personnel Policy Manual. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion does carry. Councilmember Mesky.
Uh, in addition, what would come in this particular section was, um, the possibility of a tuition waiver, um, policy addition that would allow employees to go seek, uh, credits and education to fulfill certain areas within the city. Um, that is something that we have looked at some draft, um, drafts of and there's lots of ideas about what that could look like. Um, we, we were entertaining that idea. However, we want to bounce that off the entire council before we really look into actually taking a paper to pencil, hard look and, and actually putting some pieces. So that's something that we were hoping to bounce off of the council on the retreat on the twenty-ninth. And so we have that, uh, since it was a Labor Committee meeting is what the council agreed to last time. We thought we would ask for your feedback at that. Uh, definitely not an approval at that point, but if it's something worth pursuing, if there's a, an appetite to pursue that, we would love to hear that and any ideas that you may have about that. So we'll have some ideas of what we found. Um, the HR director is exploring those tuition, uh, waiver type policies around the state and we should have some more information, uh, on the twenty-ninth. So that was, uh, information only, unless you have additional comments on that now. Uh, we did also look at section six. I think that's added in error as far as your bookmarks card concerned. Uh, we did put it in here so you could see what we are going to discuss, but that needs no action for you this evening. Uh, we are going to continue to discuss, uh, section, section six, uh, the later date because that is our only item that was going to be on our agenda next week. We are going to cancel our labor meeting for next week on the twenty-second because we are having that labor meeting on the twenty-ninth. Uh, that is the end of our, our meeting. And with that, I would, uh, respectfully move to approve the Labor Relation Committee minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes of the Labor Relations Committee. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion does carry. Next we'll have the Public Works Safety Committee report. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works Public Safety Committee, uh, met last Wednesday, July tenth on the City Office Building. We got going around, uh, five nineteen. All members were present, uh, along with, uh, a member from the local West Central Tribune. Uh, we had our fire chief in attendance. We had our police captain, Anderson, in attendance. Um, and then we had a few members of the public pertaining to, uh, one of our discussion items. The first things that were discussed were public safety updates. Uh, the fire statistics and the police statistics are both attached to this agenda. Um, we didn't note anything, neither chief noted anything that stuck out, um, from one year to the next or, or any, um, kind of major incident. So, um, but I'm sure they would stand for questions right now if any of the council is interested in, uh, questioning any of the statistics items. All right, that is for information only, so we'll move on. Um, our next item, uh, was regarding liquor license violations. And, uh, this is for information, um, at this point. Uh, staff did bring forth for information the testimony for first-time liquor license violations, um, from a, a few different, uh, organizations locally. Uh, the first was the American Legion doing business as Austin F. Hans Compost. They were in attendance. We had the BPOE Lodge doing business as the Wilmor Elks Lodge. We had ANA Investment LLC doing business as Westside Liquor. We had L-, now, they scolded me on this because I pronounced it wrong, but I said Tapatio, is that correct?
Tapatio. I'm saying it wrong now too.
I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm a Minnesotan, so that's how it goes. And, uh, and they were not in attendance. We also had a second time violation, um, issued to the Foxhole Brew House, which was, uh, they did not have a representative, um, available. And, uh, we did discuss, and there was some further research and discussion that went into, um, into one of these items, that being that the LTAPatio, or LTAP, um, this was not actually their first violation, but after researching it, this was a second violation. So I do believe, um, and I'll maybe ask for confirmation from our, um, our city engineer, but that will likely come back to a future meeting. Is that correct?
Uh, Councilmember Plowman? While technically it's a second violation, this is the first of this ownership, which actually with the new owner, it resets the clock, if you will. So this is still officially, per our ordinance, is a first offense. I think what needs to be discussed is if you would want to request LTAP to attend, still attend a Public Works Committee, which is the requirement of a first offense, in which case we'd have to send, uh, another notification.
Go ahead, Julie. I'm sorry, I'm calling, hey, Councilmember Osmus.
Yep, I was just waiting to see if, um, Ms. Thompson was going to address the issue of they were notified to be there and I thought they had said they were going to be and it was kind of a surprise to us that evening when they weren't there.
Yes, Councilmember Osmus. All letters were sent out to the establishment owners. They were sent certified return receipt. Everyone did sign it and we did not have a phone call saying that they were not able to attend the meeting. So we don't know, you know, why they did not show up. And as far as Foxhole, on a second violation, it's just a fine. They do not have to appear. So just to clarify that.
Okay, so did we determine, um, what our follow-up or what the consequences would be for LTAPatio for not showing?
That is a decision the council has to make to direct us because now it falls on your hands. According to the ordinance, you guys can enforce a stricter policy, um, or whatever you would desire. I guess I have a recommendation if, if you're interested, but-
This was originally brought for information, but because we had, uh, information in between then and now, um, I think that warrants discussion at the council table. And I guess it's a, it's up to the mayor if, uh, he thinks that it warrants, um, the council's further discussion and subsequent action.
Yes.
I guess I would want an explanation from them if they understood, uh, the certified letter, um, or if there was some misunderstanding. I would want some kind of an explanation, um, as to why they didn't show. And if they truly understand, um, the severity of the violation and the consequences.
I would agree. It's up to the council. You know, I will do whatever you direct me to do. If you want them to appear at the next meeting or whatever you want.
Yeah, Ms. Thompson, you, you mentioned that you had a suggestion. What would your suggestion be?
My suggestion would be, um, send a second letter and, you know, really stress the importance that they need to attend that meeting. And if they do not show up, then I guess you, you guys would have to enforce something stricter than that. Just to see if there's some communication error on it, that they fully didn't understand the letter. I don't know, I'm just trying to work with them.
I would make a motion that the city draft that letter, uh, forward it to the owners and, uh, provide them another opportunity to show up at the Public Works meeting. Second.
Motion made and seconded, Councilmember Osmus.
At some point, would we, like, make a phone call or have a face-to-face conversation with them?
Councilmember Mesky.
It seems like an undue burden on our staff to have to follow through. If there's, if the policy says there's a violation, if there's a violation, they are to appear. If they fail to appear and you're asking them a second time to appear, there has to be a penalty associated with it, in my opinion. Um, it, but, and then you probably want to change the actual ordinance so it actually is there so everybody understands if they don't show up, that maybe there is a penalty for it. This feels a little loose because we're going to make up a penalty that isn't in writing.
Councilmember Osmus, does that answer your question or you want further clarification from staff?
Uh, no, that's just another opinion, yeah.
Councilmember Nelson?
So, I, I know we asked and there wasn't anyone there that night to tell us what the ordinance actually said. So what does the ordinance say if they don't show up?
It does not address that.
So we perhaps need to fix that, but, and, um, give them a second chance, but I think perhaps we should be reviewing that. I think there also was a discussion that night about even the second violation that perhaps it would be good for them to show up also. So maybe we just need to review the policy after we get through this.
Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, we did have discussion regarding the various, um, instances, what, uh, po- what the policy and procedure says, what the ordinance says about first offense. Um, that's fairly clear. The second offense is fairly clear. But then you start getting into the third and there's some gray area there. And especially regarding this one, whereas there is no, um, language in the ordinance about what to do if there is a no-show. Um, so I guess I would ask a question of our legal representative. What is within our jurisdiction in terms of assigning, uh, a penalty or some sort of ramifications, uh, for a no-show given the fact that there's nothing currently in the city ordinance addressing that?
Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Members of the council. I was trying to flip to the ordinance quickly and I didn't get it yet, but I do, I have looked at this previously. And my recollection is that the, uh, city code, thank you, it's being handed to me now, uh, establishes essentially minimum penalties. And it leaves it to the council's discretion if it finds there are circumstances that, uh, weren't taking harsher action. And that can be up to and including license revocation or suspension. That implicates, uh, the licensee's due process rights. You would have to give them the opportunity to come to the council and explain themselves before taking that kind of action. But it's certainly within the council's discretion. If you don't have the kind of, uh, if you don't receive the kind of assurances uh, you think you would need to be confident that this establishment will continue to follow the, the code and not allow future violations to occur.
Councilmember Mesky?
With that said, I think that letter should invite them back and that failure to show up again could lead to as harsh as what is cited right there with the city attorney.
Um, then I would like to ask, was my motion, did it include language of, uh, asking them to return to Public Works or asking them to appear in front of the city council? Okay, do, uh, does the council think it would be more appropriate to, uh, have them appear here or at Public Works? Okay, then I will leave as is and leave the motion as stands.
Councilmember, uh, Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, whoever's drafting that letter, I would encourage, uh, maybe including that policy language in the letter uh, so they, they can review it. Um, I, I was quoted in the paper, uh, this is a serious deal. We have to make sure that, um, they know what the rule is. Uh, we've got a lot of people to protect, so, thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, past practice with this restaurant, I don't remember when it was, four or five years ago, was family-owned. They didn't come to the first meeting. We sent another letter. They sent the son, who wasn't even eighteen yet, to come to us. And we were very upset at that time with this. So I would send a letter again and make sure that an owner comes that's of legal age or the manager that's of legal age. And I would put in, if you don't show up, it'd be a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine or five-hundred-dollar fine. It's their responsibility. It's not us. So.
As a point of order, I think that you would need to have that recommendation come from the full council if you're going to do a fine other than what the policy says, the ordinance says, right?
Yeah, but I just want to make sure the letter says you send an owner or a manager and I would suggest if they don't show up the second name, then have a fine.
Sure.
So.
Councilmember Mesky?
But this isn't the same owner as before, correct?
It's two owners.
Yeah. So I mean, if we're going to send a letter like that, um, let's not reference the old owner sending somebody who was a-
No, I'm just telling-
Yeah, sending somebody who is an authority to make a decision. I understand that. Yep, but don't, I don't want to reference the other one.
No. No.
Yeah, makes sense.
Additional discussion? So in the past, and I believe the ordinance, and I haven't read this for four years or five years, so I want to go from memory, so it's probably going to be wrong, but it does say in the ordinance that the council can enact any fee, or any judgment that it chooses, and it can even jump the levels. I believe it says something similar to that, doesn't it? Mr. Scott?
Mayor, members of the council, Mayor, you're correct. There's a specific clause in the ordinance, paragraph D, that essentially states the council, at any time in its discretion, may impose a more severe penalty than the minimum schedule of fines that's set forth earlier in the ordinance, if in the council's judgment the circumstances warranted a harsher penalty.
So remember that that is in the ordinance as well, and so, so just remember, I've said it on a lot of these back through the years, as when I attended the Public Works meetings on a regular basis, so I was pretty familiar with the way it was worded and how it was amended. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we did have that discussion, and especially because another local establishment did, they paid their fine, but they did not show up. It was expressed by various committee members, that perhaps just writing a check and not showing up was a little bit too lenient, and we looked and we asked each other, well, what happens if this happens again? And according to the language we read, the same thing could occur, and so it was our feeling that it was lacking a little bit of teeth, but rather than making any big, large policy changes, we thought it best to bring in front the full council, have this discussion, because it is very important in terms of, you know, if you're going to have a set of rules, then you got to stick by the set of rules that you have. We want to make sure that that's loud and clear throughout the community, so I guess this is, this is our start to doing that, and then if it needs to come back through Public Works in terms of perhaps drafting a new set of rules that have some more teeth, I know we're certainly ready to do that.
Councilmember Elverado, follow the councilmember Osmus.
I didn't raise my hand, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, councilmember Osmus.
I think when we revisit this ordinance, we'll probably have more discussion, but just for background, and a little history for people who are listening, and also maybe some people on the council that weren't aware, but this did just get changed a number of years, just like three, four years ago, because before the second or third violations, they lost the license for a week. And so then, what came, why it changed to the present five steps, is because that really ended up hurting a lot more employees, because then, if, let's say if it's an establishment that they were going to have a banquet, then people had weddings, and they, it hurt the business, and it hurt the employees that couldn't work. So, they didn't, that wasn't the intent of the penalties, to penalize the staff, that, because one other staff person made a mistake, and sold to somebody underage. So then it went to these fines, to make a message to the owners, that to do better training with their employees, and to really emphasize how important it was to train your employees, or it was going to hurt you in the pocketbook. But I think we do need to tweak it, and that instead of the second and third violations, just the dollar amount going up on the fines, that there should still be an appearance someplace, because if you had a second and a third violation, that's getting severe.
Councilmember Davis.
I'm just wondering why, after the first violation, they don't come back again? They just pay the fine?
Well, I could take some liberties, but, and, councilmember Fagerly, correct me if I'm wrong here, because you said in those meetings, so, but at the time, the intent was that they would be advised that they should attend the meeting, and, I mean, we've changed city clerks since then, so I'm not sure if that message didn't just get followed through, and maybe the ordinance should have been updated and wasn't to reflect that, so this is no reflection on the city clerk, but as I recall, when Kevin did it, he just kind of told him, well, you better show up, this is a serious deal, because I remember them showing up, even when they paid the fine, they still showed up in the past.
I never got to see them pay the fines, I'm not sure.
Right.
But I mean, they still came. Yeah.
And they were shaking in their boots.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was a pretty, it was a pretty firm, yeah, meeting, which it sounds like, and I didn't watch, listen to the tape, but it sounds like this was a very firm meeting as well. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I should note, we did, we did have an individual, and I'll keep that individual nameless, but they're an individual that did represent that business community, and they are also very supportive of these laws, and the training that's available, and whatnot, because they put a lot of resources in their organizations to training their employees, and that comes at an extreme cost to them, so it should be even across the board in terms of, you know, if one establishment is going to go to great efforts and great lengths to make sure that they're complying with local ordinance, state law, federal law, whatnot, that all of the establishments should do so, and so they're, they're quite supportive as well, and I think the entire committee was quite impressed by that. I know that I was. But I do believe that this is a good refresher. I wish that it didn't happen, but if it's going to happen, then it's good that we, you know, that we get a good look at it, a well-rounded look at it, and like I said, we can start with our motion tonight, and then hopefully we can go back to Public Works, and we can begin moving on a new, better policy.
Councilmember Osmus.
Again, this is kind of just an education thing for the community, and we go through this every time when we have a compliance check, and we have violations, that, just a reminder that the police department and the city would like nothing better than to have a 100% pass on all the establishments that are, that are approached, and what the police department does is, they just take somebody who's underage, they don't try to pick somebody who looks really old, they're not trying to trick anybody into failing the compliance check, it's just, they just simply want you to ask for an ID, check it correctly, and not serve the person. That they're, nobody wants to trick anybody, and just want to make sure people are doing their job.
Councilmember Mieski.
I'll just say, I read the paper, and then I looked at the meeting minutes, and so I don't think anyone, maybe one of these bases, were trying to not comply with the ordinance. Maybe our ordinance needs to be updated, but if you're a second offender, and the ordinance says you don't have to show, the first time, it's probably a wake-up call, and it might be a little bit embarrassing, but I'm telling you, I'm pretty sure if I was a business owner, I had to pay the fine, that gets my attention as well. So I think the message is there, but if we want that extra step, put it in the ordinance, but I don't think any business is trying to show any disrespect to the council or anything else, it's just, they're following the ordinance we have, and maybe there are some holes in it. I also want to ask, what is the motion as we have it at this point?
Motion as it is, as I have it. Ms. Thompson, do you have it written down?
I've got some notes here. Councilmember Plowman made the motion to draft a letter, and that they need to show up at a future Public Works meeting.
That's the motion.
Okay. A friendly amendment would be to add the ordinance language with the potential penalties to that?
I would accept that, yes.
And...
Councilmember Elverado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to add the verbiage that councilmember Fagerly indicated that it be addressed to the owners or managers to attend.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just a point of clarification, I think we said that we don't have any additional fines in there, it's up to the council to establish a fine, so if we send them the ordinance, it's not going to say anything other than show up for the meeting, we're going to have to, that we're subject to doing that, is what you meant?
No, I did not. I'm citing the language that the city attorney said, that the penalties can be as high as losing your license and so on. So there are penalties, you are correct, I don't believe there's a set fine, but...
Okay, we're saying the same thing.
We are, so yeah, I'm not suggesting that you put a fine in there, but realize there will be a penalty that can jump up a level, or it can go as high as losing your license, so, because it is a serious ordinance that we're going to take quite seriously and enforce.
There are motions on the table to send a letter to LTAP Teal, asking them to attend the next Public Works safety meeting. Any additional discussion to the motion? Hold in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This next item, we were going to remove it from the agenda, but I'll just briefly address it, there's not going to be any action on it tonight. Staff brought forth for approval the authorization to be named and potentially participate in a state grant through the Candy Ohio County Attorney's Office. The office had successfully written a grant in the past for human trafficking investigations, which ran from 2017 to 2019. The attorney's office, at this time, had offered to reapply for the grant, running 2020 through 2022. However, the grant did require at least two separate departments to commit a full-time investigator for combating human trafficking in the area, and we had, earlier, we had the information that there was another agency interested and available to take part in that grant application. However, since then, I believe it's been determined by the Candy Ohio County Office that we do not have a second participant, and I do believe that there are deadlines coming up for applying for this, and unfortunately, that leaves WPD's hands tied, and I believe even the county's hands tied, and I imagine that our chief would be available for any questions regarding that from the council.
Any questions? Chief, you want to respond to that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the council. Yeah, in a nutshell, the state did put out a human trafficking task force request for proposal in late June, it was, it's due mid-August. The Candy Ohio County Attorney's Office approached numerous law enforcement agencies in our area, and down towards southwestern Minnesota, to be part of a group of agencies to investigate human trafficking complaints. In a nutshell, there weren't enough agencies at this time that were willing to commit to being a part of that, so the county attorney's office felt that it was not in their best interest to apply for the grant. At this time, they didn't have enough participating agencies, so they're going to reevaluate and look at some future grants down the line.
Thank you.
Mr. Plowman?
Thank you. And I should just add, the committee did discuss at length with Captain Anderson, the city's current and past efforts on this topic, and although it's not something that's highlighted by the news media or by the department, because of the nature of the issue, we recognize that it's a world issue, it's a federal issue, it's a state issue, and it unfortunately is a regional and rural issue, but we all feel quite confident that we have an excellent police force, and that the individuals on our police force are doing a great job at staying ahead of the curve, so to speak, and doing what they can to stay on top of these trends, so with any further questions regarding that, we'll move on. All right, item number five, and this is regarding the sale of a fire truck. Staff brought forth for approval the recommendation to advertise the sale of our 1988 Laverne fire engine. This vehicle was on a 25-year replacement cycle, but due to other circumstances, the unit was retained until 2017. A replacement was purchased last year, and since October, this unit has been kept, while staff researched the use of it as a backup truck to improve the city's ISO rating, but found it to have very little impact in changing that ISO rating. Motion was made and seconded to approve the recommendation to advertise for sale the 1988 Laverne fire engine, and that be listed for sale August 1st, with a starting price, and I'm not paging down, but I believe it was $25,000, correct me if I'm wrong.
Twenty-five.
Fifteen up to 25, maybe.
Range.
Twenty-five thousand, not a range.
I believe the range that we had had was 15 to 25, and we were going to initially advertise it for 25, and then negotiations would take place if and when we received offers, and I would like to enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the sale of a 1988 Laverne fire engine. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So where do you advertise it? Is there a fire department website, or something, or?
I would like to defer to our fire chief.
Chief Hanson?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we would advertise, there's different magazines out there, but usually word of mouth, and it gets out pretty quickly if people are looking for trucks. So we have a bunch of our salespeople that are already out, kind of feeling out the area for it, so...
So, any of the surrounding communities called about it yet, or?
Not yet, but we've had some interest in the past for it, so...
Okay, thank you.
Additional discussion? Hold in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. For the council's information, we are having trouble with our cable feed, and so we are not currently live. I've gotten a number of text messages, and so that's what I've been doing, is checking and checking with our administrator, and we have our staff working diligently at it. We have called down to the rack studio, also called our IT director, and they are troubleshooting it, but currently we are not live, and I know that that is something that you, as a council, do appreciate us having, but staff is working diligently to solve the problem, so with that, councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item on our agenda was the Sperry Tennis Court Project. Staff brought forth for approval consideration of bids for the Sperry Park Pickleball Courts Project. Staff received one bid from a local vendor, and the bid was higher than budgeted, so additional bids were solicited for each aspect of the project. In other words, our park and rec director decided to go about this as GC, to see if we could come up with some better pricing, and a better final project, and this was the result. Riley Brothers Construction, Inc. was a low bid, received for the court resurfacing in the amount of $40,345, Andy's Fence All for fencing in the amount of $17,113.36, and Surface Pro for painting the surface in the amount of $15,000. In addition to that, I do believe there was one more item of miscellaneous expense that was going to go into there, and it was estimated to be approximately $3,000. Lighting, there we go, thank you, Councilwoman Osmus. A motion was made and seconded to forward this on and authorize it, and I would like to enter that motion now.
Second.
Was made and seconded to authorize numerous contracts for Sperry Tennis Court Project. Discussion, councilmember Elverado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. GC, can you just explain to me what...
General contractor?
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What was the original bid?
Mr. Bob Gardner?
Mayor, members of the councils, I went out and got a bid for all the project to be lump sum together, and it was well over what our budget in the month was, so I decided to go out and see what it would be, just to break it down into each aspect of it, because it's only three things, and be able to save us some money that way. The extra $3,000 is actually for the nets and poles.
I think you've done that before on a couple of projects.
Yeah, take out the percentage that they mark up, just to do it, and we can do it ourselves.
Good job.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Rob was unable to join us for that meeting, but we did have discussion about the funds revolving around this. The original funding for this project was, I believe, at $150,000, and then some funds were removed and reallocated for another project, however, doing it this way, we are still able to get this project done, and actually do more pickleball courts than what we had originally planned on doing. Can you speak to that?
Well, the whole thing with Sperry is, it's two tennis courts, and with the senior high court scheme redone, and the new courts that we've had at Miller, and the middle school courts are not in too bad a shape... courts are not in too bad a shape, and the need for pickleball is there. So we looked at it, and we were able to fit six pickleball courts into two tennis courts. And we thought Sperry was a perfect spot for that. So that's why we, we'd like to move forward with the pickleball courts there.
Thank you.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Elvado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think our final item tonight is that, to close out that product, project, rather, a second motion was made to accept the project and authorize final payment in the amount of $10,588.49 to Dunnick, Inc. for project number 1804. And I'll introduce that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to introduce, to accept project number 1804 and authorize final payment to Dunnick, Inc. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Elvado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think our final item tonight is that, to close out that product, project, rather, a second motion was made to accept the project and authorize final payment in the amount of $10,588.49 to Dunnick, Inc. for project number 1804. And I'll introduce that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to introduce, to accept project number 1804 and authorize final payment to Dunnick, Inc. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Elvado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And both of those resolutions passed. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no further business for this night, so I moved to file the minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next is a consideration of internal city-county managers' association contract. Ms. Beckman.
Good evening again. I have before you consideration of the ICMA agreement as an alternate for our city administrator to participate in for his pension contributions. He has historically participated with ICMA, so we'd like to continue that for him here, rather than having him start over with the PERA account. So this is a three-step process. The first resolution would be approving his exemption from PERA, or the Public Employees' Retirement Association, the, which is in your packet. And then the second resolution would be approving the use of ICMA, which is the hard copy I handed out to you before the council meeting. And then the third resolution is approving the contract for participating with ICMA, which is also in your packet as well. It is the same contribution percentages as PERA, so there's no financial implications. It's just a different administrator for the retirement account.
I'll enter the first motion.
First motion is to approve the city administrator having a choice on his pension plan.
Second.
Discussion. Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by, I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Elvado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is a resolution approving the use of ICMA by the city of Wilmer.
I'll make a motion to approve the use of the ICMA by the city.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve using ICMA as a retirement option for the city. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Elvado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Elvado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next is a resolution approving a contract for ICMA participation to be signed by the mayor.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the ICMA participation. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Elvado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is a consideration of premise permit, Green Mill. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my office received an application from the 100-yard club to the gambling board to obtain a premise permit for a gambling license at the Green Mill located at 2100 Highway 12 Southeast, Suite 1, and its staff's recommendation to approve the premise permit and to direct the city clerk to forward the same to the gambling board.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, this has to do with, this is a simple motion, but it has to do with alcohol, so it takes a roll call. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Elvado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
I can make a comment. Councilmember Fagerly, I didn't see your hand, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm glad that a local organization is doing the pull tabs here, because when this came up a few years ago, New London Spicer were doing the pull tabs here, and the KEC, there was somebody from Mankato's. That money was going out of the community. This stays here and helps our young people, so, thank you to them.
It's a lot of responsibility, I think. That's why it was hard to get somebody to do it before, so, yeah. And I know that our staff had tried to get somebody locally to do it, but, yeah, so. Okay, with that, we'll go to council comments. I'll start with Councilmember Elvado.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Osmus.
I have several things. First, I think since our last council meeting, we had one, if not two, large rain events, and I just want to do a hats off to the Public Works. I did go driving around while the three-inch rain was happening, and there was Public Works trucks everywhere, and they were with the cones or the barricades, with the trucks picking up the branches, clearing the streets, and just hats off to them. Good job. And then hats off to the police department. For the American Legion had their state convention in town this last week. There was hundreds of people that came for that, and there was a little rescheduling that had to take place, and the police department adapted, and they had their parade, and the traffic control was taken care of. And that's, to me, was, that's just good PR, that we're going to work with an organization like that for a huge convention that came to our city and accommodate whatever their needs are, and I think that looks really good for the city. The last thing, I just want to talk about the Bike MS event right across Minnesota that's taking place this weekend, and it will be out at the Civic Center from 5:00 to 9:00. There's going to be live music and food and activities, and everybody is welcome to stop out there. They're expecting about 400 or 500 people, and the event starts in Wilmer, and they will be biking to Ortonville, and then after a couple days, they come back. And if you would like to volunteer, they still need some people to help with all those hundreds of bicyclists. You can contact the Convention and Visitors Bureau if you would like to volunteer.
And that opening ceremony is Sunday night.
Sunday night.
Correct. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I dress like a traffic cone tonight in honor of this. I've had the privilege of watching 19th Avenue be worked on the past couple weeks, and it's amazing what a well-organized crew can do with some good weather and the right equipment and the kind of speed that they work. And I think, I haven't talked to anybody around town that doesn't now realize just how much use that thoroughfare gets. That's a major arterial road in our city, and doing this preventative maintenance will save us loads and loads of money in the long run. And there's exciting things going down in the far west end of that as well. Construction continues. I would just urge the public to be very careful, be patient, and take your time, because it is not worth an accident. There have been a few fender benders, and there have been some small incidents, but we'd like to keep it that way, so, with that.
I'll pass.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there's a big concert tomorrow at Robins Island. I think someone down this way will probably talk about it, so.
Councilmember Mesky?
I was just going to say, it's getting hot outside, but it's going to get really hot out at Robins Island for Rockin' Robins the next couple of times. There's a shameless plug.